All right, good evening, everyone. This is now 5:33. Our apologies for the late start. We had to find us a flag so we can do the pledge of allegiance. So if you don't mind, can you please stand with me and the fellow council members as we say our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna do the Texas flag. We don't have it up there, though, but...
You're ready. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, one, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Councilman Lowe, can you...
Do we have someone here from the police department?
No. Councilman Lowe, can you please leave us in the invocation?
Thank you, Father God, that we are assembled here tonight to do service for the citizens of Bashrop, Father. We ask you to hide us behind the cross, Father. We ask that you give us guidance and wisdom and make best choices for the citizens. Father, we also thank you that we brought us here today for service and we've answered the call, Father. Bless us now as we continue to serve Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Lowe.
All right, on to our presentation portion of the meeting. Agenda item 4A, our budget workshop, presented by our city manager, Sylvia Creo.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, you have in front of you the presentation in print as well as the budget at a glance, that is where we start, where we propose to start the year, revenues coming in, expenses going out, and where fund balances end by fund. So we'll start off with some important dates. Today is still workshop mode. We have our first public hearing on September 9th. We have our second public hearing on September 16th. Both of those will be discussing the tax rate. September 9th is the proposed tax rate. September 16th is establishing the tax rate, and the final budget must be adopted by September 30th. Now, I've been asked, what happens if we don't get to September 30th? Well, you adopt the current rate that you have today until such time as you can call the appropriate hearings to establish the tax rate with the correct number of public So because this is a work in progress and we're not at the end of the budget year, I'm going to give you some changes from the last meeting. We did have some reduction in expenses in the BEDC and the hot fund, which resulted in an increase in fund balance. It took the BEDC to a little over $10 million and the hot fund to over $3 million. So all good things. There was a correction to all fund summary. That was a typo. I am surprised none of you caught it. It was a 1 and there was a 7 in there. That was a significant difference that nobody yet caught. We do have a recommendation from Councilmember Meyer in the public safety, in the general funds. We have a recommendation from Councilmember Fosler, all funds. We have a VERF recommendation from your city manager, however, that's not finalized. And then we have some community support organization information and also the Uplift Bashrop proposal. That name is not solid. If somebody has a better name, I'm all for it. So we'll start off with the all-fund summary. Total revenue is correct, $72,435,786. Total expenditures decreased to $68,475,766. That took excess revenue over expenditures to $3.96 million and ending a fund balance at $62,9,662. There is that typo, 67674 versus 61674. So also included at the dais is a huge budget at a glance. And this is, again, the most simplified method that I like to share with our residents, what each of the funds are doing. Where do we start the year with our fund balance? What do we expect our revenues to come in to be? What expenses do we plan in the budget? And then at the end of the fiscal year, what are those fund balances supposed to be? If there's any account that has a drawdown of fund balance, you would see that in red. Largest contributors to fund balance, BP&amp;L, water, wastewater impact fees, debt service, transportation impact fees, and BEDC. We're gonna now just focus on the general fund. This is largely unchanged from our last meeting. Total revenue of $18,892,735. That's a little shy of $19 million. Operating expenses, $18,966,036. We are pulling down fund balance of $73,301. We have an ending fund balance of $5,406,474. That is 28.5% above required fund balance. Our reserve policy says we have to have 25% of expenses. So 25% of $18,966 is a number. And we have $664,965 above that number. There are some final sweeps that will happen in the fund. Again, we're not done with the budget, so there are some last-minute expenses. I believe there's a sweep of about $160,000. That's assuming none of the departments have any last-minute massive changes to their fund. A lot of that is from salary savings. It's not because the departments weren't able to do, they held vacancies throughout the year, et cetera, et cetera. Unless you're the police department, she figures out every dollar. We love you, Vicki. So we had assessed values of 1652,283,458. The total assessed value was 1657,845,717. That is $1.6 billion. But there is an amount that we use to account for those things that are still in, not in agreement, so there is $1.652 billion. There was $31.7 million of new value added in 2025. We had an overall taxable base decrease of .008%. It doesn't seem like a lot, but when you're dealing with billions, it matters. Definitions of the tax rate. No new revenue rate is the rate that would generate the same amount of revenue last year based on the value of the same properties from both years. For us, because those values dropped, that is .5179. The voter approve rate, that's the maximum rate allowed by law without voter approval, is .5392. The de minimis rate is the no new revenue rate plus the ability to raise $500,000. That is specifically for small cities. That rate is .5307. So our comparative table shows our new, no new revenue rate of .5179. We do have a debt rate of .1852. That's a reduction of .1969, which leaves maintenance and operations at .3327 for the proposed no new revenue rate. So required by law is a comparative. Our no new revenue rate last year was .5009. This year, it's .5179. Our proposed tax rate last year was .4994, a little bit shy of the no new revenue rates. And this year, we are doing the no new revenue rate. Again, just reiterating that voter-approved tax rate, that no new revenue M&amp;O rate, maintenance and operations, proposed rate, and debt service. And that 1852 already includes the $15 million borrow for quality-of-life improvements. Here's a table showing those comparative rates. We've been on the decline, which is a good thing. That means more value on the ground. And as we continue to build out, that is, that will alleviate the pressure on the general fund and allow us to bring more of those quality-of-life and public safety resources There's our historical tax rate. Again, this table's a little bit misleading because it looks like that's a tax rate increase. It isn't. When you base it on valuations, property owners actually, on average, should pay about $69 less than they paid last year. And this is why. In 2024, the average value was $335,116, which meant you would have received a tax bill of $1,674 from the city of Bashrop. This year, values dropped to $309,839, and our assessor says it was a market adjustment. And our proposed rate is 5179, which means the tax due to the city of Bashrop on the average home is $1,605. So it dropped approximately $69. Sales tax is the other big revenue for the general fund. This year, we are only projecting $100,000 over what we did in FY '25. When we were creating the budget, we had all kinds of information about tariffs, et cetera, et cetera. So we were very, very conservative on sales tax projections. We do know there is a litany of things. If you've been watching Community Impact and you've seen Bashrop County Foodies, where they list everything that's coming online in the next 12 months, we know this is a very conservative estimate. So today's budget workshop will again talk about street maintenance and rehabilitation. We'll talk about the bridge and those quality-of-life improvements. There was no additional staff for public safety this year, but we'll talk about Councilmember Meyer's proposal to add one or two police officers. We will talk about the VERF, but I'm not prepared to give you any specifics because I'm still talking to the bankers and the investment folks. I will show you some information that's in the VERF so you can scratch your head as much as I do. Discover Bashrop, those changes resulted in not needing to draw down the fund balance and the hotel occupancy. And then many of you asked about our community support organizations and where those fit. So there is a slide that is not printed in your packet. It is here, and you have a handout at your desk. So despite no increases to staff, the police budget increased by $346,355. Those are step increases. Those are just us catching up with the rest of the world around us as it relates to salary. We did do a no cost of living. However, every employee gets a 2.5% increase at their anniversary date. So they're spread out throughout the year. And that's approximately $353,000. I did remove all of the payments from the VERF except the absolutely required lease payments, and most of those belong to the police department. The proposed budget includes 3.5 new full-time positions, one accountant in finance, one HR generalist, one mechanic in fleet and facilities, and a half-time library associate. It also includes increases in health benefits of almost $687,686,217. And that's a 10% increase, which is down from the 26% we thought we were going to Here's that community support. We had all of these individuals submit for support. Last year, we funded $171,141. This year, the proposal is $161,972.50. That is funding the American Legion, that is funding the Bashrop County Emergency Food Pantry, the Women's Shelter Long-Term Recovery, CASA, the Children's Advocacy Center, Combined Community Action, which also includes Meals on Wheels, Feed the Need, and Hands Up in the Streets, Hands Up High. These are all organizations that provide support through the city of Bashrop through a variety of needs throughout the year. So for example, the Bridging Bashrop Board knows that our veterans are a need, so that's the American Legion funding. Bashrop Community Emergency Food Pantry, that item speaks for itself in a very tight economy. The Women's Shelter, also, they work closely with the police department, as does CASA and the Children's Advocacy Center. Those are specifically PD-related. Bashrop Long-Term Recovery, there isn't an episode that doesn't happen before we are calling Bashrop County Long-Term Recovery and In the Streets, Hands Up High, where they are opening their doors for shelter, et cetera, or arranging cots, blankets, those kinds of things. And then we have Combined Community Action, which includes, again, Meals on Wheels. So, and then Feed the Need. And that one also sort of speaks for itself, as they continue to serve meals in a growing need every Wednesday there outside the farmer's market. Now, what we talked about during the retreat was creating a Bashrop Gives or a Bashrop Day of Giving, and in the report, I called it Uplift Bashrop. So there is an opportunity for the council to begin sort of a foundation day of giving, and we can give it seed money and help some of these organizations meet their need through that seed money, but also encourage the community to contribute. The museum had great success doing that this past weekend, and so we're hopeful we can model that. Any questions on that one before I move forward? Because you all made eye contact with me.
So I have a question on the community support items. There's also a discussion about turning those into support contracts and then more or less ending the program so that we don't have the same conversation next year.
Correct, and moving toward the day of giving.
Yeah, okay.
Sylvia, also on the Uplift Bashrop, with new nonprofits coming onboard that may be outside of the city, so the question is, will we handle everyone the same way? Are we going to have a difference if they're in the city limits, outside the city limits? Been funding for a while, first-time fund, will there be a change or distinction?
Those are policies we have to determine, but I would say if you're in the city, it should probably be a one-to-one. If you're outside of the city, we can think about quarter-to-one or half-to-one, but those are entirely council policy-driven.
I don't think we have anyone. All right, yeah.
This is the addition of, this is actually one public safety officer, and we can do the math and multiply times two. One officer, while the base pay is relatively small, at 62 and some change, we have TMRS, which is a 14% benefit in a two-to-one format. So the employee pays 7%, and the city pays 14%. That's not your standard 401K. That is what I call the golden handcuffs. The employees can't access that to borrow for a home or anything like that. It is a savings account that is very much tied to the overall organization. If a employee doesn't complete their 20-year retirement, they don't get the city's portion. So it's a contribution, and it is an annuity that employees are paying into. To outfit that officer is $20,000, so the total for the officer is $90,933. The kicker comes in the car. It's $115,000. So if we want to talk about the addition of public safety officers, but then fund those cars in a different manner, that is a conversation that can be had. At this point, with 600-plus thousand, you're able to fund three public safety officers or some combination thereof. This is Councilmember Fosler's request. Councilmember Fosler, she tossed a 2.5% COLA for staff. This is above the step increase. So a total would be $353,028 to all of the funds, with the general fund bearing the largest brunt at $258,673. So, sorry, total all funds, $452,791. This is... A 2% increase yields $362,232, with the general fund bearing $206,938, 39 if you round up.
Sylvia, just a question. What was the COLA last year?
We had a 3.3% COLA as well as the 2.5% step.
Step.
Every employee programmed already in the budget is a 2.5% step increase. That's what's been able to keep us in line with the cities around us.
Gotcha.
So what would the difference between the 2% and 2.5% allow us to be able to do?
A 2% is 362, 232. A 2.5% is 252. So in your one-time expenses, you have about $664,000. So you would be able to do a 2% increase and one police officer.
And the 2.5 is just across the board? There would be police department and everyone else?
That's 2.5% across.
All right. Okay. Yeah, I'm liking the 2% because that allows us one more police officer. Now, the police department still will get that 2%?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
And just to clarify, Sylvia, if I remember correctly from the ask but was not given, PD asked for six officers, is that right? Thank you.
Okay, so we can possibly get one out of this.
They could get more if we can figure out the VERF. And so that's a conversation with, again, the investment bankers. And we do have that planned, so...
And this 2%, is it also on top of, there are 2.5 already correct, right? Okay. Thank you.
Correct. And that percentage has a cumulative effect because it is the 2.5%, and then it's the 14% on that 2.5% if that makes any sense.
Okay.
So that's why the difference between 2.5% and 2% is almost $100,000, even half a percentage.
Thank you.
That's also compounding because each year, your pay and increase is on top of the increases on top of the increases.
So that ends our commentary on the general fund. Do you have any questions in that fund before I jump to the special revenue funds?
Doesn't look like it.
Great. Special revenue funds, these are the funds that are restricted. These are specific to a particular use. For example, BEDC can't pay for anything else other than BEDC expenses, et cetera, et cetera. So these are all very healthy funds. We have some new funds listed in here. The transportation impact fee is new, and the Valverde Public Improvement District is new, as well as the engineering. That one had been tucked under the general fund, but engineering really relates to projects, and so it is project-specific, so it should be charged to those particular projects they're working on. So significant changes proposed. Development Services has a fund balance of 1.3. They have revenues estimated of 2.232 with expenses of 2215 with an ending fund balance of 1393. They are gaining a development coordinator, and inspections and plan review remain in-house. This is a relatively new fund. This was tucked under the general fund, and this amount really is what contributed to that $800,000 contribution to the street fund when this was buried under the general Engineering Services, this is a director of engineering, two project managers, and a project manager coordinator. Again, they won't be charged to the general fund. They are specific to the project they're working on. And those costs amounted $749,569. Revenues and expenses match. We don't carry over a whole lot of fund balance because they're project-specific.
Sylvia, so are those contract employees? How does that work where, okay, so if the, you know, if this revenue source dries up, then what's our, you know, what's our burn, you know, period?
Contraction of staff.
Yeah, okay.
It would be a contraction of staff.
Okay, thank you.
Street Maintenance, again, a relatively new fund. It has a fund balance of $863,000. We have revenue expected of $3.5 million with expenses of $2.3 million and an ending fund balance of a little over $2 million. I am not proposing any additional staff in this department simply because we have a new director that we are on the hunt for, and I believe there are still economies to be gained of when we realign the mowing contracts. Right now, there are mowing contracts in streets and drainage and also in parks and recreation. So I'm expecting those two directors to work better. We are having GIS map those areas, and more than likely, I'm going to bring that in-house local, meaning I will manage multiple smaller contracts so I can have consistency at Fairview Cemetery, for example, or the Rites of Way, et cetera, et cetera. Right now, we have two large companies doing the mowing, and they have other contracts other than the city of Bashrop, and we are sort of out of the way. So this is revenue from the sales tax allocated. We do have street rehabilitation. There were some bonds that were borrowed. Those are also being paid from the general fund and not this fund, and it's included in the general fund debt service. Councilmember Plunkett, after our last meeting this past Saturday, I met with an asphalt paving contractor, and I met with the county. So we are, Commissioner Carmack and his superintendent have been very, very helpful. And so what I used to do in my prior city, which sat in three counties, Nuasis, Aransas, and San Patricio, Aransas County Road and Bridge had it down pat, very much like Bashrop County. So Aransas County Road and Bridge used to do all of the prep work for us, and our city is coordinated. For example, the city of Portland bought the street sweeper. The city of Aransas Pass bought the zipper, the reclamer machine. Another city bought the roller. And so we worked together to do that. Aransas County Road and Bridge would come in, zip it, add any additive, roll it, and then get it ready for us to go pay a third-party contractor to asphalt it. And that's what I proposed to Commissioner Carmack. We are planning out the streets. I know Buttonwood is a street. I know Mesquite is a street. And we've got some improvements at Drainage in the Pine and Jefferson Street right behind City Hall at that intersection. So my goal is to stretch this as much as I can and not carry a fund balance. The paving contractor that I met with, we did essentially the entire south end. We mapped the entire south end. We mapped Olive Water Farm in Linden. We mapped Buttonwood. We mapped Wilson. We mapped near Minerva Delgado Park, so there's a great amount of paving that I'm expecting a proposal from. And if I can work it out with Commissioner Carmack, we may be able to do a great number of streets this year. Cemetery Operating Fund. You know, this fund is one of those long-forgotten. This one right now is operating on a borrow from the general fund for the columbarium project. The columbarium project has a very good return on investment. It is expensive to be buried in a really nice place in the city of Bashrop. And so there will be more project expenses this year as we finish that project out. And when that project begins to turn a profit, which should be within the next 18 months, then that loan will start getting paid back to the general fund. Next item is what we call a designated fund. This has some highly restrictive uses, and there's no changes proposed to this fund. This has a lot of public safety. It has municipal core technology fee, those things that are assessed on your ticket. So legally, super restrictive. There are some larger fund balances in some of those, like parkland dedication, et cetera, et cetera, that we will have to determine projects throughout the year. But at the point of this budget print, there isn't an identified project in that fund. Water and Wastewater has a healthy fund balance of $15.8 million. Revenue expected of 10.1, expenses, 10.193, expenses of 10.189, with an ending fund balance of an increase to 15.877. The expenses include one additional plant operator and one additional maintenance technician. We did not propose any monthly rate increases in the utility bill. However, we did this past year increase the wastewater impact fee. So if you recall, that's going to help pay for the wastewater treatment plant. And what I'm expecting of this group is we get in better operational alignment with streets and streets. streets and street repair. So a good number of our streets are waiting because we've got to do some water or wastewater work. What you saw, I think, last week, and you may see it on the 26th again, is our pipe bursting project that's happening on 71 that we're getting ready to have happen on Farm, Water and Linden, so we can get on with the business of repairing those streets. Here's that impact fee. My teams is still popping up. Water and Wastewater Impact Fee has a fund balance of 3.959. Revenues of a little over $4 million. Expenses of 3.4 with an ending fund balance of 4.5. These impact fees can only pay for those things that have an impact to the system and are improvement to the system. So this is not a, this is not a fund we can raid. I'm not sure what's happening with the. With the screen. It's tired. Hotel Occupancy Fund. So this has a balance of 2.4. This year, we're estimating revenue of 4.8. That's a significant jump from last year. Last year, we proposed 3.5. We're already $400,000 over that proposal. So this year, revenue, between revenue and interest earned, et cetera, revenue should be 4.87 in that fund. Expenses are 4.216 in that fund. And we're finally adding to fund balance again to take that fund balance to a little over $3 million. This one had reduced expenses from the prior presentation. We had to align those community assets that I'm going to show you on the next page. This one saw some economies of scale in the realignment of Visit Bastrop to Discover Bastrop. So we eliminated a lot of the redundancy in those contracts.
Sylvia, just a question since on the hot fund. That also, we can pay down the debt on the convention center, right?
Correct.
Will we be doing or proposing that to come?
At the convention center, we'll have about $990,000 of repairs that are going to be programmed.
Right, okay.
Do that first, and then we'll work on the debt.
Good.
The roof alone is about $275,000. So here is the community asset support sheet. This was also requested. And I sent you an email earlier today that talked about the cap to the historical and talked about a cap to the arts. So the African-American Cultural received $50,000 programmed. The Historical Society, $140,193. The Visitor Center has no cap at 293,632. The Opera House, we left them at $194,000. And that's because we give them an additional $100,000 in annual support, up to $1 million. And then the Lost Pines Art Center stayed static at 167,950. I know some of you had questions for Chloe as to what their long-term plan is because of the building, their occupancy of the building, where they're going to go. So we've left that as-is until such time as those questions are cleared up. The one item that was not included in here, and you saw it on the community asset, is the Kerr Center applied under community support instead of applying under community asset. And that's an additional $50,000 request that would fall under the historical line item if the council so chooses to fund that.
So just a question on that then, in the future, the next meeting, can we, if the Kerr Center so desires, can they switch it over to this or?
It's up to the council. If you direct me to do that, I will bring that back.
So we've done, that's what our history has been on that?
So was it a mistake?
No, the Kerr Center has been an on and off again funding. They haven't had consistent funding annually in at least the three years I've been here. So last year, we did fund under historical that allowed them to do some much-needed repairs to the building.
And I know their request was 50 for this year. And for our support group, we have them at zero, so.
Correct, because they really belong in this.
So that can't, so I guess that's a question we need to.
So last year, the Kerr Center was funded for an event that they didn't have? Is that correct? And so there's funds remaining from that budget, is that correct?
We swept it to fund balance.
Okay.
But yes, theoretically, there are funds remaining from that.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, you can resume.
Here's the VERF Fund. Transfers into the general fund, $451,000. Water and Wastewater, $50,000. So it starts with a fund balance of $5 million with revenues of 1.575 and expenses of 2.9 million with a ending fund balance of 3.7. So expenses far exceed revenues in this particular budget year. So my idea was invest and allow some of that interest revenue to pay off some of that. Additionally, what you see on the screen is, this is a relatively new fund also. It's at least, it's probably five years old. It predates me. But there are some very small equipment items in that VERF Fund that are not capital items. They really should be in everyday operations. For example, there's tires in there and tracks to the skidster. Those are all less than $5,000 expenses that really have no place in the VERF. Because what that does is, it requires that purchase from the VERF and the contribution. So you're almost double-dipped for three out of the five years that you're trying to get current. So here's, I know that this is a, this is small print, but this is an example of the VERF sheet we were working on this year. There is about $141,000 of really what are operating expenses. They're very small, like blades and tires and those kinds of things that don't really have a place in a large VERF. Then we have those things that are a little bit larger. They have a five-year or more, the vehicles, those do belong in the VERF. And I'm not sure why that's not showing green. Those do belong in the VERF. And then we have some really large items that belong to BPNL and Water and Wastewater. Those are very healthy funds. There's no reason why they can't purchase those out of fund balance instead of contributing large, large, large amounts into the VERF. So that's what I show at the bottom of the screen. BPNL and Water and Wastewater paying those. They have well above the 25% requirement. They have well above that. And then if we so chose, there are excess funds in the general fund that could help the Streets and Drainage, Fleet and Facilities, and Parks and Recreation to the tune of $137,000. That takes the VERF down to a super manageable place this particular year and allows us to, you know, take a breath, take a full, full, full inventory of what we have, and then really put it in a, in a method that makes sense. We have lease payments right now. Some of those lease payments end with a dollar. Some of those lease payments end with $4,000, $7,000, $12,000. So it's been a mismatch. The city really took it in the shorts during COVID because we were hard-pressed to get vehicles, and that was really the only place we could get them quickly. So I don't have a total formal solution for you for the VERF. But by the time our budget workshop comes around, I will hopefully have visited with each of you and have a more solid answer. So last council meeting, you heard about my request to form an investment committee because I believe that we have left a lot of money on the table by not investing all of the money that we have in the bank in our, in our great number of funds. So even if we were just to invest $5 million in the VERF, that's four point, at a 4.4%, which is about average right now, that's $220,000 a year. That certainly could go down and purchase some of those vehicles that police department, you know, costs $115,000 apiece to buy. So just investing the VERF properly could take care of two police vehicles. So just in an opportunity cost mentality, that's the way I think about it. If we were to do all of the police department vehicles at about $2.5 million, a seven-year note is about $396,000. Right now, she's contributing almost 500 between the VERF and maintenance. And so that would reduce the general fund by $176,000 or so. So lots to be gained there still. And again, I'm sorry, I don't have a solid answer for you just yet. Moving on to our debt service fund, this is also a fund that should only be used to fund debt. So the general fund debt service starts with a fund balance of 581,000. We have revenues of 4.9, expenses of 4.1, with an ending fund balance of 1.435. That 1.435 will be drawn down, and we will pay off several notes from 2006, 2007, and 2008. That will then have a snowball effect into the following years of available debt capacity.
This is, these are those ones that have small balances left that we talked about?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
And then the Water and Wastewater Debt Service Fund. This one has a starting fund balance of 3.2. Revenues match expenses, and the ending fund balance is the same as the beginning fund balance. This one, because I'm not sure where we're going to end up with a future borrow, depending on what the Water Development Board says for our grant, depending on what the participation is with Correx, and depending on the total opinion of probable cost of wastewater treatment plant number four, we're going to leave this one as-is. We do have a savings that you heard at the last meeting from wastewater expansion number three. We have about a $1.2 million savings. And that will end up being used to pay for the planning of wastewater expansion number four. So certificates of obligation 2025 included in the, in the tax rate for the debt is that $15 million borrow. The priority is Old Iron Bridge. Secondary, there's quality of life improvements, which includes parks. Some of those require an amendment to the park's master plan. That means we have to take it to the Parks and Rec Committee. That means we have to hold public hearings. That means we have to take it to planning and zoning, and ultimately to city council. None of those things are happening in a vacuum. They will have the air for public consumption and comment. So the Old Iron Bridge, we have programmed at $9.6 million. That's inclusive of some additional millions that we had from a prior borrow that we were going to try to get a grant match to. Fireman's Park, we have programmed at $370,000, which includes a, includes a playscape. It includes a covers for the bleachers, some new bleachers, a restroom. Lots of improvements at Fireman's Park. Mayfest Park, $248,000. That includes a covered pavilion and playscape area. Delgado Park includes our first accessible park, and it includes our first splash pad on that side of town. And it ties into the existing park and also a large pavilion and a bathroom, and conversion of the existing bathroom to ADA. Fisherman's Park, $675,000, and that is repair of the existing splash pad that will put in a recirculation system and really rehabilitate that splash pad and target it more towards smaller children. The Pine Street House, I have programmed here at $500,000. And we'll have to have a discussion, a sidebar discussion in executive session on that house. I programmed $75,000 for shade structures at the Little League Field, the LCRA Field. There's multiple bleachers out there, more than 10, that are just in the bare sun and those, those poor parents. I programmed $500,000 as a placeholder for a Veterans Memorial. That would include the memorial and the associated improvements at the memorial. I do not have a place picked out yet. We have been bouncing around the area by the police department in that green space. And we've also been bouncing around the area by the American Legion, right sort of across from the fighter jet. We have $550,000 programs for a par-three golf course that's on the 15 acres across from the convention center. We have $50,000 for a bark park. We have $50,000 worth of improvements at Kerr Park. $500,000 for improvements for a assembly space of a German casino. And that's a placeholder here because that really could be funded out of hot funds if we build it on the grounds here at the convention center. And then $25,000 in improvements at Ferry Park. And that's just to touch up some new benches, rehabilitating the cover that's there.
So I just would like to just point out that this is quite a bit of improvements around our community for the citizens. And it points at a lot of preservation of things that's been here. So I'm pretty excited from, you know, those of y'all don't know, the German Casino, that was the brick building that fell down over here. And so I'm real excited about the efforts in preserving that history, as well as other areas in the city of Bastrop that long overdue. So I'm looking forward to, hopefully, we can come to an agreement on some things, maybe everything. So, thank you.
This is the rendering for Fireman's Park. This is, it pays homage to the firemen. This is a rendering of a building and a fire truck, mimics a fire station, some coverings and new bleachers, and a bathroom in that area. This is a rendering of Mayfest Park. Again, a large pavilion that is essentially between the restroom and the bleachers, the stands in that green space. There is not a stitch of shade out there, and it gets very hot. So we've got some swings undercover. We have a playground undercover, and we have a large pavilion with some tables undercover. This is Delgado Park. This is one of the views to the park. This is the inclusive playground that is ADA-inclusive, that allows a child in a wheelchair to play on all of the amenities in this particular area. And looking toward the black, the back, you see the splash pad within this area. And then there's another similar restroom facility. And those restrooms are modular in style, meaning they come in two pieces. They are Wi-Fi. They allow for automatic valve, automatic locks, being able to shut off the water and the power from a remote location.
And we are keeping the other playscape as well, right?
Correct. We are keeping the other playscape. And the other restroom is getting an ADA facelift.
Okay.
Fisherman's Park. So this one is, this one's very near and dear to the community's heart. And it needs not only a facelift, but it needs us to be able to capture and reuse that water. During the summer, more than a million gallons of water just goes down the drain in this park every month. So these are some of the amenities. You can see these are smaller, childlike features. We have the toad. We have the butterfly. We have some cute figures that kids like to climb over. There's a larger pavilion that has more tables. And the recirculation pump will be hidden toward where the existing electrical sits. So we will have to relocate some crate myrtles that are here. We talked to the park board about where those will be relocated, and they'll be relocated on the site. Crate myrtles seem to do well when you move them. So just to let the community know, we won't be killing the trees. We will be relocating them.
And so that, that is a Houston toad, right?
We'll call it a Houston toad. I think his name is Freddie the Frog.
Do we have to treat the water before recirculating it?
Yes, there's a, yes, there will be a certified person that we have to have on staff, both in this, to be able to do this one and also Delgado.
One can do both, right?
Yes. These are the shade structures that we are proposing at the Little League Field. Not all of those bleachers up there need to be replaced. We're really only looking at replacing the wood bleachers. But the new requirement for those kinds of bleachers that are five rows up is that they have that containment area. So not all of the bleachers will look like that, but the ones that we're replacing will look like. Those covers are the type of covers that we would be looking at. And so what we'll do is, those, those equipment pieces will be drop shipped. We'll work with our engineers to help establish those footings, and then we'll do a community build, just like we did Bob Bryant Park, for all of those amenities. Otherwise, those covers. Otherwise, those covers are close to $300,000 if we let them be bought and installed by the manufacturer, versus $78,000 if we do it ourselves.
Yeah, save that for the home team.
And so looking forward, we have wastewater treatment plant number three, which is about a 60 to 72 million dollar price tag. And Mayor Protem Kirkland, I did get a response to your questions, they are positive. I will shoot you that email. I did not drop it here about the planning and expansion and not having to respend that money again. We did apply for a Water Development Board grant. You have to apply for preliminary information. We did that. The grants will open up closer toward the end of the year. The plan for this plant has always been a third, a third, a third. A third from a grant, a third from the city, and a third from Correx and our other partners who will be tying in. The water service expansion, this is an elevated water tank that is over in the Valverde subdivision area that provides redundancy to the city. We are in the plat for Valverde, we have already exacted the right away for those lines and things, so we don't have additional costs to pay. We are talking to Valverde about the participation and their ability to market on the elevated water tank. I mean, I'm, so long as they help pay the cost and it doesn't offset the utility rate, then I'm okay for them to paint a green elevated water tank, and I'm sure the ratepayers would appreciate no rate increases. So considerations, the proposed rate doesn't have to be the final adopted rate, sales tax is super conservative, there are no fee increases proposed, and the general fund, available fund balance over the 25% reserve is $664,965. Important dates, September 9th, September 16th, and we need to adopt the budget by September 30th. Any questions?
Counsel, you have anything? To my right, my left? All right, I think we're question free.
I would ask if there's some direction to staff of what you want to see for public safety, for a COLA, I would really like to hear that now. If you want me to include Kerr in the hot request, I'd like to hear that now so that we can make any adjustments that are necessary as we bring forward the September 9th.
Okay, so well, I think we should do the 2% COLA so that we can make sure we can acquire at least one more police officer. So whatever we got to do to look at that, or if we can get the numbers on that.
And I'd like to see something considered for Kerr with consideration of, as Mayor Protem Kirkland said, they could have a fund balance. However, I know they do have things planned that they presented, and they did use most of the money, they did huge improvements to the Kerr Center, so if we could have some discussion on Kerr, that would be wonderful.
Bring back the verf.
All right. On the verf, I just, I want us to be sure that we are not creating a liability, you know, two years from now when it runs out of money, and then we have vehicles to replace. So I'm just looking at, you know, what happens down the line when, you know, we're not even here anymore? Because that was what it was intended to do, so I just, you know, we're certainly going to kill it by not funding it, so I just want to be sure that's the right thing, or if there's an alternative.
And so I want to be real clear that this year, and certainly that's correct for the long term, for this year, it is adequately funded. The payments that need to come out of that will be contributed into the fund. What we need to set bumpers around is what is considered equipment that goes into a capital account versus what should be in the normal operating account. That's number one. And then number two, as the police department works their way out of those leases, what is that giant payment?
Well, I also think you mentioned that the wastewater and that they could take on their own vehicle purchases without having that in the verf, but, you know, so there's some things there that make sense.
All right, well, thank y'all. Okay, we're on to citizens' comments. I was just about to ask you if you, I see they're rolling in. I think you're probably going to have some more here coming up. I'll give them a few minutes. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. So first citizen comment I have is from Wesley King. He emailed, and it is, he would like us to record his support for the par three golf course. Wesley King, thank you, sir. I have a public comment submission from Kristen Rollins. She wrote in to me and the council, so it's quite a long, she's just concerned about infrastructure, true affordability, traffic impact, and preserving Bastrop's character. So, thank you. Let's see here, we have another one from JB Kuhn. He is still against the development on Pecan Street as traffic is already at an all-time peak. Thank you. And we have another one from Lori Plimpton. She's writing in, let's see, she's writing in about the North End Prairie development and her concerns, flooding, parking, impervious cover, and the overall impact. Thank you. All right, so those are the ones who emailed in to us, so thank you for taking the time to do that. And now we have citizens here who are signed up to speak. So up first, I have Dr. Renee Cervantes. Can you please state your name and for us, please, and your address, and you'll have three minutes?
Yes, Dr. Renee Cervantes, 107 West Camoa Court in Bastrop. Right, to the Bastrop City Council, thank you for the time to address the par three course, which is greatly needed for this community. Again, my name is Renee Cervantes, and I am a third-generation Bastrop native. My grandfather founded the downtown boot and shoe repair business, which my father continues to run, reflecting our family's commitment to Bastrop's economic growth. I graduated from Bastrop High School, as did my two sisters and our father. My mother is a retired Bastrop ISD employee, and my father instilled in us a deep support for our student-athlete community. So I'm grateful for the opportunity provided by the State Parks Golf Course, Lost Pines Golf Course, which allowed me, my sisters, and several youth golfers to earn college golf scholarships and multiple state and regional championships. So since the closure of Lost Pines Golf Course, Bastrop lacks a course that is centralized, easily walkable, budget-friendly, and quickly playable. So this par three course will meet those, these key needs for our community. So having played hundreds of golf courses and rounds of golf around the country, I can assure you that this will not be an elite country club for the wealthy, but rather a charming, well-landscaped course for individuals of all socioeconomic backgrounds, ages, and ethnicities. So for all taxpayers, this provides a cost-effective alternative to private golf facilities and improves the overall well-being of Bastrop residents. So senior citizens can have a less physically demanding course where they can stay active and socialize, and youth and junior golfers will have a safe, engaging space to learn golf, develop skills, build confidence, and learn discipline and teamwork. So last summer, my sisters and I were inducted into the VHS Athletic Hall of Fame alongside other former athletes, highlighting how sports in Bastrop ISD serve as a pathway to higher education and impactful careers. Because of an affordable and local golf course, I was able to earn a college golf scholarship and eventually a doctorate that now allows me to help nonprofits fundraise for their mission and impact the world. So growing up, I remember my father working multiple jobs and my mother sacrificing so much to pay for tournament fees, travel, and hotel lodging so we can advance competitively in the game of golf. At a young age, I remember collecting empty beverage cans to cash in at the recycling center and help pay for tournament fees, and some of you may remember that recycling center was on the other side of this building back in the day. So golf is certainly not a game for the elite. It is a game for people of all backgrounds who embrace challenges on and off the course. All taxpayers and our young golfers, especially those of a middle or low-income household, will greatly benefit from this par three course. A central and affordable course changed the course of my life, and I believe it will do the same for your Bastrop citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. So just so I'll give you all a heads up, thank you, Rick, for getting the timer. I will, like, throw my hand up when you have 30 seconds, that way you'll know to wind it down. All right, up next, we have Gilbert Cervantes. He wishes to speak on the par three golf course. Thank you, Michael. All right, Mr. Cervantes, if you can introduce yourself and your address, please, sir, and you have three minutes.
Yes, sir, my name is Gilbert Cervantes, 107 Camoa Court in Bastrop, native Bastrop, born and raised. I've seen this tremendous growth in our area, especially in this last few years. With that, there's also a lack of recreational facilities that are depriving our youth and young adults of organized sports. The development of par three would provide an affordable experience for our community and visitors, along with the accessibility for students to learn this tremendous game. In this area, we only have two facilities, private golf courses that are owned with substantial green fees and a large amount of initiation fee to be a member. This makes it financially difficult for seniors on a fixed income and for many young youths in the Bastrop area to afford the exposure to this wonderful game. In the closing of our Lost Pines State Park, that ended our chances of affordable golfing, it was a walkable and centrally located place in which to play golf. And during this time, the Lost Pines Golf Course was open and had many successful programs, as my daughter had mentioned, for boys and girls, and wonderful coaches that provided an opportunity for them to exceed and move forward to a college to learn this game and provide themselves with the opportunity for an occupation. Many minorities, all ethnic groups, went to colleges on scholarships and have since returned to Bastrop and contributing and being productive citizens. I would like to thank the Parks Recreation Committee, the City Council, and our city manager for their support and consideration for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cervantes. We have Ramonda Watley. She does not wish to speak, but she is in support of the par three course. We have David Joder. Sorry, I just can't read your writing, I'm sorry, but he is, does not wish to support, I mean, does not wish to speak, but he is in support of the par three course. I have Neil Myers. He would not, he would like to speak in opposition, oh, he checked too, but does not wish to speak, and he's in opposition. I'm not sure if it's for the golf course or the North End Prairie. He did not specify. Right, yeah, I'm good there. That's what we called it back in the day, NEP, so. For a different reason, though. All right, I have Melinda Larson. She wishes to speak on the NEP, North End Prairie. Good evening. If you can, please state your name and address. Thank you.
1320 Farm, Bastrop, Texas. In 2025, at the North End Prairie meeting, a resident brought up that there was a council member related to Tom and Jody. Very soon after council member Foster, as I recall, an advice from her attorney, and after serving on council for 10 months, voting on items, recused herself from voting on items related to the North End Prairie development. In March 2025, council member Foster posted a Facebook video titled "The Origin Story of the Four Acre Pocket Neighborhood Development in the North End of Bastrop." Council member Foster starts out by saying, "I've been meaning to tell y'all the origin story." She goes on to say that she's been attending community meetings for 10 years. She also says, in, or about 2025 years ago, she does say, she started getting so many calls, so many calls, and begins to see a pattern for housing needs from all the calls and people she'd been talking to, even saying that one person asked, "Is there a place with a bunch of little houses where me and my friends can all live together?" So I'm just going to call these conversations the demand for North End Prairie. She also states, "I can tell you the beginning of the story because I was the only one there, but I can't tell you the middle of the story because I had to step out on election night." So I guess one could assume Ms. Foster has been meaning to tell us for a minimum of four long years, or knowing about North End Prairie, even stating she was intimately involved, but didn't find it important enough, or maybe could have forgotten to tell us. So Ms. Foster goes on to say, "It was like the prescription for the housing problem was being written before my very eyes." So I'm going to call that the supply to the demand for North End Prairie. So in 2021, the property was purchased by Tom and Jody, and the buyer's agent Realtor was Carrie Foster. Tom and Jody have stated they're making no money on this development, which makes me question if Carrie Foster made a commission as her Realtor, which is legal and perfectly fine, because you weren't on the council at that time. So from 2021 to election night, Carrie Foster was, according to her statement, again intimately involved in the North End Prairie development, and ran for council with a campaign slogan, transparency for the people, and posted a little affirmation to transparency for the people, which read, "Community first, I am the people, it is my business."
Ms. Larson, I tried to let you know that your time was about to run out, so if you So if you can just wrap it up for me, please, I'd appreciate it.
I'm gonna go to the last page. And I'm gonna say, in my opinion, here we are again with another questionable situation with Councilmember Foster.
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Isabel Leal, and she does not wish to speak, but she would like to record her opposition to the North End Prairie. We have Ray Leal, who does not wish to speak, but he would like his opposition recorded to the North End Prairie. And we have Cecilia Serna, who would like to speak in citizen comments on Agenda Item Say what? Well, I just, I mean, I just was reading what was on here. It's a citizen comment. You put down specific Agenda 8A. So I was speaking more so also for, we can have some clarity if you wanted to do it now or when that agenda item comes up.
I'll wait for the agenda item.
Okay. That's usually why I said it, because sometimes people check both boxes and not really sure what they want to do. So, all right, thank you. We're gonna save that for Agenda Item 8A. Wesley King, did you want to speak? Good evening, sir. Could you please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. And I'll like raise my hand so you can...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. My name is Wesley King. My address is 154 West Oak Loop. It's actually Cedar Creek, Texas, 78612. I am in favor of the Part III golf course. I've lived in Bastrop since, in and around Bastrop since 1998, raised my family here. I have two young adult children and two grandchildren that are plugged into the community as well. One is a teacher at BISD, and the other has toddlers that will be in the BISD school district in just a few years. My family of two has grown to a family of eight in 25 years we've lived here. So obvious growth. We must embrace that we are growing, and we need to provide safe, healthy, wholesome, and relevant entertainment options. I remember living on the golf course of Tahesian, going out and playing hole number 10 with my son as a small child. Those little outings became tee times, and those tee times cultivated a captain of the golf team. He now plays golf with family and friends and is teaching his own son the sport. I see this being an activity for families, growing together, and having a positive impact on all Bastrop families. I believe that the golf course is a perfect opportunity to invest in our youth in particular.
Okay.
It is a great outdoor event activity that will get them off the devices and plug into nature. It promotes physical activity, reduces stress, enhances cognitive function, and fosters social skills. It reaches young people of all economic backgrounds and introduces them to a sport that they can enjoy for the rest of their life, not to mention the potential to unlock scholarships for talents that might remain hidden without opportunity. I see it being a positive impact on all students. It's also a great opportunity for young adults and business professionals and retirees. The course can be an ideal destination for corporate outings, team-building events, fundraisers, connect as a social hub for all ages. This is a place for our residents to connect, build relationships, participate in community life, and I see it having a positive impact on Bastrop's business community.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you.
Do we have any more? See, you had some more brought up. Thank you, sir. Okay, we have Cheryl...
Crookberg.
I'll let you. Yeah, you can take care of that when you get up here for me, please.
I didn't expect to be called so soon. I just slipped that paper, and I thought it'd be at the bottom of the pile, not the top.
Well, so we have citizen comments, and then we have agenda items that you can speak on specifically. So if you sign up for citizen comments, that generally, that happens at the start or towards the front here before we get into the meeting thing, so.
I'm watching that timer.
Okay.
It's not going yet.
No, you're good. So if you could just state your name, especially your last name, so I can have that and your address, and you'll have three minutes. All right, thank you.
My name is Cheryl Crookberg. I live at 2000 Pecan Street, which is just, I'm speaking on the North End Prairie topic.
Yes, ma'am.
I live right across the street from where that development will go, and I did not take the time to prepare a lot of statements, and none in fact, but I just want to reaffirm my position that it's not a good fit for the neighborhood. It will have a really strong impact on the traffic, which there's not enough control of up and down Pecan Street anyway. So I really, that's all I have to say, is that I'm strongly opposed to that development going in as designed. I'm concerned about the lack of transparency, about how it's been presented, and the amount of information that we've gotten in a timely manner and the impact on the community. So that's what I've got to say.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Crookberg. Did I get that right? Crookberg?
Close enough.
Close enough? Okay, we're gonna keep trying. All right. Okay, so now we have Cecilia Serna. She's here to speak for the General Golf and Citizen Comments. All right, name, please, and address in three minutes.
1104 Hill Street. Now, golf focus versus recreation channel. Has anyone thought about why not vote? Why don't we start something? At least, let's do a feasibility study, because one, as far as I know, does not exist. And as Mr. Cervantes said earlier, Bastrop does not have many options. Why support it? Why support the rec center? Well, please don't ignore what the citizens requested in the master plan survey. Yes, the master plan is a living document, but it still doesn't mean you shouldn't try to follow it. This is what causes citizen apathy. When citizens are ignored on what was requested on the survey, that's not going to bode well on future requests or asking why we do things, what my request or our request of citizens, and whether or not it's going to be ignored or followed through. Now, the reasons given in support tonight all apply to a rec center or another high bike natures. It all applies. It's the same thing. The citizens' desires and wishes were made clear two years ago. Now, as far as the support that was first mentioned in the July meeting, I found it surprising that four people stood up to speak in support of this for an item that wasn't on the agenda. I found that odd, and it seems to me like there's some lack of transparency there. Or, well, I'm sorry, just definitely a lack of transparency, and had I known, I probably would have stood up then to say something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Serna. All right, do we have anyone else for citizen comments? Okay. All right. Get them in, get them in. All right, so we have Barbara Coy, and she does not wish to speak, but she wants to let it be known she is in opposition of the North End Prairie. Rebecca Schaefer, she does not wish to speak, but she wants it to be put on record that she is in opposition of the North End Project. Nene Leos, she does not wish to speak, but she is in opposition of the North End Prairie. Did you want to speak? You have "do not" and "want to," so I wasn't sure. Okay, I figured, I figured that's what happens when it's the second one sometimes, but I always want to check, make sure we're good. All right, are we good on citizen comments?
Yes.
All right, awesome. Thank you, everyone, for your input and your comments. It is going to be recorded and considered. Thank you. All right. Agenda Item 6, all matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. So you want to, want to?
I do need to pull it off.
You do?
I do, yeah.
Okay. All right, so Agenda Item 6A, consider and act on the second reading of ordinance number 202565, authorizing the city manager to sell the city-owned property located at 1808 Jasper Street, Bastrop, Texas, with an amount of $210,000.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason Councilmember Foster pulled this off is because you had requested this be sent back to the Emergency Services District with some comments about not holding it and then selling it for the future. So we put a restriction of 36 months to get started on construction. I met with them today. That is totally fine. The contract that I have in front of you says that very thing. What was in your packet is the old contract that doesn't have that stipulation.
And then the one more stipulation, that it not be assignable.
Current.
Yeah, those two changes are the ones we needed.
Up there. Probably is on your packet. If you want to search through the packet. Good luck. All right. Just that all you have.
That's all, yeah.
All right.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
With a two change, motion to approve the most recent contract. Is that good?
Yes, which is there in the special provisions on number 11.
Okay. Second. We have a motion. Any second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, everyone, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 7A7, and that is executive session. So it is now 6:55. Oh, wait, I gotta read it. I always forget. So 7A, city council shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the North End Prairie. And 7B, city council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding possible legal action regarding waste services. It is now 6:56, and we're breaking into executive session. Thank you.
And Mayor, I'll be recusing myself from Item 7A.
Yes, ma'am. So we're on, we're live? Okay, we're back from executive session. No action will be taken at that moment. We're on Agenda Item 8A. Consider and act on an appeal regarding vested rights by a development known as North End Prairie per Article 1.20.015 of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances. Madam City Manager.
Mayor, thank you. The applicant and their respective attorneys will be presenting to the council, as is their right under that section.
Are they here? Oh, just, just the representative, the attorney. Okay, I thought they were going to be here. All right. Would you like to come up, please, sir, and introduce yourself? And please let us know who you're representing and where you come from. Thank you.
Excuse me, my name is Terry Urin. I am representing Jody Smith and Tom Liebowitz, husband and wife, who bought this property in 2021. They transferred it into an LLC that they wholly owned, Pecan Park Bastrop, in 2022 when they were getting ready to develop the property. Excuse me. Jody Smith is here. Miss Tom Liebowitz was not able to be here this evening. He had a longstanding commitment with his father, and he's back in Connecticut visiting him right now. But let me say this, before we get into the details of vested rights ordinance, I saw the Facebook invite that was sent out in the neighborhood, and I thought it was a little misleading in talking about this project as government housing. It is not government housing. It is a private development project, private funding. There is no government money involved. The target audience for this project are first-time homebuyers, you know, folks that make 80% of the median annual, median annual income of the community, you know. For a single person, that's about $73,000. For a young family of four, it's $104,000. Target audience is regular folks, policemen, firemen, schoolteachers, city employees. Project has been well-thought-out over a long period of time. They've got some good architects. It will be well-designed, well-built, and it'll be affordable for first-time homebuyers, people that are trying to, you know, get out of the apartment housing and, you know, start building a little bit of equity. It will be a nice project. The, I noticed that this has been scheduled as a public hearing, which I think is a bit of a misnomer, because when I think of a public hearing, I think of the city council asking the public for their input on matters of policy, policy positions that you're going to take, adopting a new budget, changing a zoning ordinance for a community, matters of that sort. In this case, tonight, you're being called to sit as quasi-judges to judge whether or not the staff erred when it determined that the vested rights statute did not apply to a couple of the ordinances that you passed after this project got started. And, you know, just, as a judge doesn't, you know, invite everybody in the courtroom to give their opinion on a legal matter between two parties, we have a legal matter here between Jody Smith, Tom Liebowitz, and the city, and there's a legal interpretation that needs to be made. And we're not asking you to support this project. We're not asking you to approve this project. Project's got a ways to go before it will be approved. Still has to complete the preliminary subdivision plan and then move on to final plan. All we're asking you to do is to decide a matter of law, and that is, did the city properly apply an exception to the vested rights ordinance when it said that they can enforce an ordinance that was adopted in 2025 to a project that started in 2022? Little bit of project history, and then I'll get into the vested rights issue itself. As I already said, Tom and Jody bought this property in 2021. As I already said, Tom and, and Jody bought this property in twenty twenty-one. They moved it into their LLC in, in early twenty twenty-two. They then applied, the first permit that they applied for was a, a neighborhood regulatory plan, which is required by the city. Tell us your concept, tell us what you want to do, let's look at what the zoning is, does it all work? That was filed in August of twenty twenty-two, and it was finally approved in March of twenty And the concept, as, as I mentioned before, was to provide affordable housing that would be homeownership in a, a small infill community. They then went on, after, after they got their neighborhood regulatory plan approved, and they hired an engineer, and they started working on the preliminary drainage plan. And the preliminary drainage plan took a little longer. It went through a couple of iterations. They had to submit a revised version to put a detention pond onsite as opposed to being offsite. And that drainage plan was finally approved in March of, I'm sorry, in May of twenty twenty-four. After that, they got together with their, their engineer, and they started working on the prelim, preliminary subdivision plat. The preliminary subdivision plat laid out the streets as private streets, the lots, the park, the wa, the walkways, the parking, and that preliminary subdivision plat was submitted in December of twenty twenty-four. Staff reviewed it, and as staff typically does, you know, they, they look at it, they have their comments, and they have their revisions, corrections that they want to see. And they went through that, those iterations. Staff recommended some changes, and they made all of them. After they made those changes, they, they conferred with staff and says, did, did we get everything you wanted? And they were told, yes, you, you addressed all our comments. That was in February of twenty twenty-five. About that time, the owners became concerned by a flurry of ordinances that were passed in the first three months of this year. And so they asked an attorney in, in Houston to write an, an application for vested rights. And that vested rights claim was, was made on, I think it was March five of this year. On March twenty-eight, the city staff through its grandfathering committee issued a determination that was a little confusing. They, they approved a couple of the, the grandfathering requests, but they, they said that the, the parking would have to comply with the new ordinance that you passed on January eight of this year, and that the project would need to comply with the new lot coverage ordinance that you passed on January, I think it was twenty-five of this year, which amended the allowed impervious cover or lot coverage in the P-three zone district from sixty percent down to fifty percent. So let's talk about how this ordinance actually works. Vested rights statute is chapter two forty-five of the Local Government Code. It was originally adopted in nineteen ninety-five and revised and re-adopted in nineteen ninety-nine. And it, it's called the Freeze Act, because the concept is, whatever the rules, regulations, ordinances, and requirements of the city where you're trying to do your project, whatever those are when you file your first application, those are the rules that ought to apply throughout the life of the project until you get it completed. In other words, it's not right to change the rules in the middle of the game. So the statute defines what a project is. Defines it as an endeavor over which a regulatory agency asserts its jurisdiction and for which one or more permits is required to initiate, continue, or complete the project. Tom and Jody initiated the project in twenty twenty-two with the neighborhood regulatory plan. They continued the project with the various iterations of the drainage plan, which they finally got approved in March of twenty twenty-three. They pursued a preliminary subdivision plat in twenty twenty-four. They even worked on this for a long time. It wasn't until January of twenty twenty-five that the city adopted an ordinance, which perfectly appropriate for some neighborhoods and some projects, adopted an ordinance that said, we want to change the impervious cover or lot coverage requirement in the P-three zone. Perfectly okay. But this project was already in progress, and the general rule in vest, of the vested rights statute is, you can't change the rules in the middle of the game. Now, there's a couple of narrow exceptions. In two forty-five oh oh four, parent two, it says that you can adopt a new ordinance if the new or, and, and apply the new ordinance to the project if it doesn't have the effect of changing lot size, lot coverage, building size, open space, or, or tree issues. Well, the city recognized, and in, in your staff report, it shows that you recognize that they had a product, you know, they have a project. The project was started in twenty twenty-two, and they said the tree, certain, the new tree survey requirements would not apply, the tree preservation requirements would not apply. Most of the new ADU requirements would not apply, although I'll get into that later because they did condition the vesting on the ADUs to say, notwithstanding that, you still have to comply with the January twenty twenty-five parking ordinance amendments. So, let's talk about how we think the exceptions that the staff has determined give it the, the right to enforce these two new lot coverage and parking requirements impact the project. Could you dial up page three of, yeah, page three of this? Back at six, four, three, there. Start with the new parking requirement. Move, 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 I want, I want the exhibit. There, that's good. This is a, a typical proposed lot in, in the project. And you can see it's, the dimensions of the lot are thirty-five feet wide, fifty-five feet long to the street, which is nineteen hundred and twenty-five square feet. It's got five-foot side yard, open space, setback, five-foot rear yard, open space, setback, and a ten-foot front yard, setback.
Sorry, did you say five-foot wide, uh, space?
Uh, the side yard setbacks are five feet.
Five feet?
Yes.
Okay.
So the house that you got the footprint in the middle is twenty-five feet wide, and it's forty feet long, which is a thousand square feet. The, the parking requirements in the P-three zone, when this project was initiated and up until January of this year, said you could have parking that would serve the lot somewhere in the development. It didn't have to be on the same lot as the development, as the, as, as the lot it served. And there wasn't any specific number of parking space requirements. The ordinance you passed in January said you got to have one space for each bedroom. So two changes were made. One, it said that the parking spaces now would have to be on the lot as opposed to, you know, down the sidewalk in a designated parking area. The second was, instead of having just one parking space, you had to have two. And it also required that the parking spaces would be ten feet by twenty feet. That's two hundred square feet. So you put each of those parking spaces on this lot, and you wiped out a good part of the front, almost all of the front open space, a good part of the side open space, and you've cut into the building footprint. So what you've done is you've affected lot size, I'm sorry, building size of the house, which won't be a thousand square feet anymore. Open space, you severely limited that, and you've increased the impervious cover by four hundred square feet. In addition, with the other ordinance that you passed on January twenty-five, you reduced the allowed impervious cover from sixty percent to fifty percent. This project, right here, as it, as it's designed and as it was submitted with the preliminary plan, was fifty-four percent impervious cover. It, it met your ordinance. It doesn't meet it anymore if you can enforce this after-adopted ordinance. So we submit that the exception doesn't apply. The exception of two forty-five oh oh four, parent two, does not apply, because if it has an effect on the project that you've been working on for three years, it, it, it isn't allowed. It's not a question of, well, is this the right way to design this, this lot? You can do that, and you can change those ordinances, but prospectively, not on a project that's been invested for three years in, in planning. With regards to the, the lot coverage ordinance, the January twenty-five ordinance, it amended lot coverage. Obviously, if you amend lot coverage, you've affected lot coverage. So the city is not relying on that particular exception to say that you have to comply with the new lot coverage ordinance. Instead, they're claiming that the, there's another exception, which is at two forty-five oh oh four, parent nine. And that, that exception is, um, to prevent imminent destruction of property or injury to persons from flooding that are effective within a floodplain established by a federal flood control program and enacted to prevent the flooding of buildings intended for public occupancy. This is a really narrow exception. It's a narrow exception that's got three prongs to it, and you have to meet all three tests in order to take advantage of this exception. First of all, the ordinance needs to be intended to prevent imminent destruction of property or injury to persons by a flood. There's nothing in the ordinance that you passed that declared that this was an emergency ordinance to prevent imminent destruction of property or injury to persons from a particular flooding situation. Second, the property is not in a flood zone administered by a federal flood control program. And third, the property, the houses that are going to be built here are not intended for public occupancy. So in fact, this exception fails on all three prongs of the test. It does not apply. In summary, the ordinance amending the impervious cover in the P-three zone from sixty percent to fifty percent has a tremendous effect on this project. The project has to be reduced substantially in, in the number of units and loses its designed intent to provide affordable housing for first-time homebuyers. It, it basically causes one to start from scratch on a project that's been ongoing for three years. Likewise, the parking requirements have the same impact, affecting lot size, lot coverage, building size, open space. And because it affects those things, it's not, it's not a qualified exception. The general rule applies, only the rules, regulations, ordinances, and requirements in effect on the project initiation they control throughout the life of the project. One last thing I want to say is, there were several other ordinances passed in the first three months of this year that are listed on page six of our brief, that were not directly addressed by the city staff when the vested rights application was made, that we think could, depending upon what the city's staff's interpretation is, affect the project. And we, we think that there, there aren't any exceptions that apply, and that all of the ordinances that were the ordinances that were passed in, in January through, through March of this year cannot be applied to this project. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I would like to reserve a couple of minutes to respond after the public hearing is over.
We're not actually having, okay. So, would you, you got anything down here? Do we have anything down here? Okay. All right, thank you. We'll move on to our citizens, and then if we need to call you back up, we will. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. All right. We have Larry Albers, who does not wish to speak, but he is asking to deny the appeal for 8A. We have Catherine Albers, who does not wish to speak, but she wishes to deny, she asked to put on record to deny the appeal for 8A. We have Elaine Weiss, and she wishes to deny the appeal. She does not wish to speak, but she wants to deny the appeal for 8A. We have Pablo Serna, he wishes to speak on agenda item 8A. Pablo, are you here? Do we have the timer ready? All right, let us get this timer set, please. All right, thank you. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Pablo Serna, 1104 Hill Street, and I do wish to speak in favor of this project. Of one big reasons is, is this is, has always been up for development, and as we can see, it is a flag lot that has gone really bad. It's, it started off, and all the, all the properties around it were sold, and you got a piece in the middle, and, and it's just seemed undevelopable for a long time just because of the nature of it. I think the scheme that has been presented with really small, much smaller housing types is, could be successful. The number could be debatable, but they certainly can do something there. Most houses are around 2,500 square feet right now. This, as I understand, the largest house on this would probably be 1,350. Mostly, there are some that are as, as little as 500 square feet. So, these are small houses. As someone mentioned previously, this is primarily for workforce housing, new buyers, teachers, first responders, young people, that kind of thing. So, I think it's a, it's a positive project needed in Bastrop. It's great that it's close to the downtown core. It would allow for multi-transit, walking, biking, even reasonable transit. I think the big thing on this one is it's not what we call an auto-centric development. It's not based around the car or a parking space. It is really based around people and walkability, and that's kind of the nature of why there are smaller spaces and maybe the parking is remote. So, the ordinances that were passed early this year would have a detrimental effect on that design and change it into a, into a, an auto-centric development, whereas this is a human-centric development. I do think that it will improve the flooding situation there, as was mentioned. Right now, I went out there not too long ago, I mentioned it previously before, that the inlet that's there right now over that storm drainage seems high to me, like you would have to really give a lot of water before it actually enters, probably clogged up. I put it in a retention pond, that could make some improvements there. I do think the traffic flow would be improved by having a cross street over to Hill Street and, you know, connecting Pecan and Hill across this development. So, bottom line, I think this development will help the rising, people having the rising cost of homes, complete the flooding.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. And demonstrate how a person-centric development can really work for, for Bastrop. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Up next, we have Heather Green, and she wishes to speak for agenda item, on agenda item 8A.
Heather Green, 2007 Pecan Street. Thank you for having us here tonight. We appreciate it. Oh, I want to start by saying that I am a mother, a teacher, a student, and I don't say this to ask for sympathy or empathy. I say this to tell you that I am busy, very, very busy, and I am very tired of getting up here and repeating myself to people who choose not to listen, not you, talking to people behind me. We don't want this here. You know, let me get back on topic. The city denied parts of the grandfathering request specifically parking and impervious cover, and those two things are very big for us. I seen a post recently on Nextdoor talking about the parking, I mean, not the parking, the speed that people drive down Pecan Street and Main Street and all of the other streets downtown, and it is quite frankly ridiculous. And let there be a car parked on the side of the road, you have to wait for oncoming traffic to go by before you can go around. And if you don't set up parking correctly, Pecan Street will be flooded with parking, which means we will not be able to get out of our house. And Hill Street currently has no curbs, which means your very nice detention pond that we spent lots and lots of money on will have people parking right outside of it. So, to say that parking is not important is laughable at this point. And as far as impervious cover goes, there is a reason that it was changed because the 500-year flood is now the 100. And if you don't think that's the case, let's look at July 4th and talk about what happened, because it could happen here. To say that we don't flood, I have pictures from neighbors who have water standing in their front yard, or in their house. We flood. We flood over and over again. You might not be able to see it recently because they don't mow the grass back there, so when it rains, you can't tell there's standing water, but there is. At this point, I'm so frustrated to sit here and listen to someone split hairs over the legalities of it and to feel like we are not heard. My daughter wears hearing aids. To say that adding a cross street from Hill Street to Pecan Street is just amazing and is gonna let up on traffic is laughable because my daughter wears hearing aids and wouldn't be able to go outside and play safely. As a mom, I am fed up, and I ask that you stand behind what you have been continuing to stand behind and deny this grandfathering request because you have every right to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. All right. Up next, we have, is it Jose Weska? I'm glad you're coming up here because you didn't state if you wanted to speak or not, and, please, okay, okay. Yeah, no, no worries, no worries. I'm glad you're still here and was able to. Can you help me with your last name, though? Like, I'm trying to get your, your scratchings here.
My name is Jared Horuska.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and city staff for this opportunity to address y'all. My primary issue with this development concerns residents and their rights. Residents abutting this development have provided eyewitness testimony to two flat deal breakers surrounding North End Prairie. First, a significant history of flooding, including where water rose to enter and damage homes. Vehicles have been flooded and washed away in this area. Veteran postal worker Tommy Clayborne stood up here and testified as a witness to these issues, observed over many years of serving this area as a postman. Secondly, there is the issue of parking related to this development. Developers aim to brand this as an option for singles, retirees, teachers, firemen, et cetera, who will travel lightly with one to two vehicles per unit or walk everywhere, as we're hearing. The reality here in Texas is that these folks may have roommates, teenage kids, relatives, guests, and even boarders in these units. Plus, let's not forget, Texans like bigger vehicles. They're not going to be walking downtown. Let's be real about this. A person-centric community where this is located is not even walkable to downtown hardly at a time like this in the year. This parking issue will likely, likely become an ongoing detrimental side effect of this urbanist development, which would literally be squeezed into the center of a city block. Not even mentioned here are out-of-town company, delivery vehicles, teenage kids as friends, school pickup and drop-offs, golf course carts, school buses, and other everyday traffic in and out of this space. And by the way, the idea that Hill Street, or having a, a byway through these two streets to ease traffic, I find that hilarious. The density of North End Prairie would do nothing but worsen these problems that are already a challenge for Bastrop. So, a very pretty picture of quality of life is painted in this development's marketing campaign, but what about the quality of life for longstanding residents that this all affects? The B3 code's stated goal was to infill any bit of undeveloped land with new construction. That goal was always high density. This means the exhaustive urbanization of our town. This is the route Austin has chosen. Bastrop citizens are at a crossroads here. Will we blindly follow in the footsteps of the city of Austin, or will we stand to preserve and celebrate the unique history and character of our Bastrop? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have Cecilia Serna, wishes to speak on agenda item 8A.
I'd like to speak on support of this appeal. This ordinance did mention parking minimums. Now, parking minimums might be something that could be changed in the future. It doesn't make sense for houses that will be a starter house and eventually some, the family may have an infant. The infant does not eat parking spot, not until perhaps 16 years down the road, and who knows what the changes may happen by then. Now, the specific plans for the development, I'm not sure as far as on-street parking, but that could also be made a better option. The on-street parking is happening now, and mostly from what I've observed, it's because garages have been converted. So, if that's not longer happening or prevented, then the possibility of parking in ditches, culverts, could be a moot point. It's not reasonable, especially in instances where a PDD may be, or has been approved in different areas. As far as impervious cover, you're telling me that a 4% difference is significant enough to create an imminent destruction. We're talking 4% difference. I don't want to be on the hook for a potential suit due to not adhering to Chapter 245 of the Texas Code as described in the packet. I don't believe it's reasonable to leave the property fallow, and we should work with the developers and suggest options on what would work. Now, there's a quote that I found by a board-certified state, estate attorney, in which the city of Austin had purportedly imposed new regulatory restrictions retroactively on development projects that were already underway, causing project failures, bankruptcy, and regulatory uncertainty for developers and landowners. That was one of the main proponents and for people advocating for Chapter 245. If Austin lost a suit, and they're a much bigger city than we are, the potential for that happening here.
Thirty seconds.
Is pretty great. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. You had 30 seconds. I thought I was just gonna wrap it up. Thank you. All right. So, we have Victoria Liao. She does not wish to speak, but she is in opposition of agenda item 8A. We have Alexis Castillo. She does not wish to speak, but she is in opposition of agenda item 8A. And I believe that is it for our citizens. Do you have anything else you would like to give in response?
Just very quickly. I appreciate the situation you're in. The legislature has kind of tied your hands. From a policy standpoint, you have, you have every right to, to change the, the rules that you want on, on parking, on, on lot coverage, neighborhood by neighborhood, but in, in this case, these people have been working on this for three years, and the law is pretty clear. This, this isn't even a close case. I know you got a very good attorney. I've known Mr. Zek for a long time, dealt with him, interacted with him in a number of cities over the, the years, and I'm, I know he's giving you good advice, and he will defend you very well if this thing goes beyond where we are here tonight. But, you know, it, it's very, very likely that, that this will not stand at the next level when just looking at it from a purely legal standpoint and the facts of this situation. And lawsuits are expensive, and, you know, if you lose, you pay not only your attorney, but you pay the plaintiff's attorneys, too. I hope it doesn't get there. I hope we can work this out. We, we ask that you, you grant the appeal, that you also, and I didn't mention this earlier, but direct the planning commission or the planning staff to refer the preliminary plat that we filed to the planning commission for action. At the time that the, the grandfathering committee denied the appeal, they also just kind of threw in that they were denying the preliminary plat. We, we know that preliminary plat is acted on by the planning commission. Staff can make a recommendation, but the planning commission acts on it. So, we do want to have the preliminary plat acted on by the planning commission. So, we'd ask that you not only grant this appeal, but direct the staff to send the preliminary plat on to the planning commission. And I have a draft motion if you want.
All right, thank you, sir, for your time, your thoughts, and concerns. All right, so I believe that is, we've come to the end of that discussion.
If there's no discussion, I have a motion. I make a motion to deny the appeal of North End Prairie.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let the record show that it was a unanimous decision. We're on to agenda item nine, taking any necessary action, necessary appropriate action on matters posted. For consideration, it closes executive session. We're not doing anything on that, and now we're on to agenda item 10.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, Bastrop. Thank you, everyone that came up to show support tonight. We'll see you at the next council meeting. We love you, Bastrop. Have a good night.